This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on November 28, 2023 at 6:02 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. For the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. First on the agenda is executive session to discuss strategy and retention of counsel regarding potential litigation in Civil Action Number MDL Number 2873 in the United States District Court, District of South Carolina pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Before I undertake a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy and retention of counsel regarding potential litigation in Civil Action Number MDL Number 2873 in the United States District Court, District of South Carolina pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. We will be back soon. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets. Are you ready to?
Yep. Yeah, we made changes to the October 30th minutes, and I'm prepared to vote.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 30th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Do you want a roll call or not?
Uh, sorry. Well, yeah, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
And I move to approve the minutes dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. He's a creature of habit.
Changed your wording on me.
I know. Okay. Next on the agenda is fire capital repurposing request. We have Chief Murphy with us.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I think I'm having speaker issues. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can barely hear you.
Is that any better?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Chief.
Loud and clear. You can call in too, maybe.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Probably his microphone, I mean, his speaker.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, sorry about that. For some reason, my computer audio is not working, so I'm on my phone, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you want to take us through this?
Yep, so, um, I think Sharon may have sent a summary to you, but I'll try to quickly summarize it. So, we had applied for a FEMA assistance firefighter grant back in FY '22, and the grants are, always have a 10% capital match on it, and so it's kind of difficult sometimes when we're applying for a larger grant to be able to have the money to also purchase or do the match with it. In this case, we had applied for a couple of replacement cardiac monitors, and we applied for 16 defibrillators that go on the engines and around Town Hall and other places like that throughout the town, and we were successful in getting the grant, but actually, I step back, we had also asked Capital to fund us for the two monitors that we needed, which was the 70,000, about $70,000. So, we were successful in getting the grant, we used a portion of that and then some other money that we had to purchase the defibrillators, and we now have a surplus. So, we're hoping to repurpose that and use for some other items that we have not requested through Capital yet, but if we aren't able to do that, then we will have to do them. These are items that, you know, we didn't anticipate the need about a year ago, now we see a need for them, so we're hoping to be able to repurpose them. So, quickly on those, what we're looking to do is to purchase some additional, what's called wildland slash rescue turnout gear, that, right now, our firefighters, every time they go on a motor vehicle accident, anytime they do any, like, rescue call, hazardous material type of call, they're wearing their structural turnout gear, which is wearing the gear down, and the gear also contains PFAS, so we want to try to eliminate and, you know, limit their exposure as much as we can. So, what many other departments have done, like other fire departments, is to purchase the rescue wildland gear, and then the firefighters can use that gear and prolong the life of the regular stuff, and it's a little safer for them to wear. So, that's one cost with it. We're also looking to replace the large training monitor that we have at headquarters, that was a smart board that we actually got on a grant through emergency management about eight years ago, and unfortunately, it's failing on us now. So, we're looking to replace that and a couple of other smaller things, a couple of, to purchase some additional portable radio batteries and two additional portable radios. So, I think that summarizes where we are, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Liz, do you mind if I add to it?
Sure.
So, I just want to add that we encourage, in our office, we encourage this kind of a repurposing effort because it really incentivizes the department heads to go out and find as much grant money as possible. They won't be penalized for it or punished for it by having their capital money removed and distributed elsewhere, they're going to be able to extend the capital needs in their departments, even if they go out and get all this great grant work. So, it's a win-win when this happens.
Excellent, yeah, great point, and thank you, Chief Murphy, for all of your efforts to secure grant funding and thinking creatively about how to repurpose the funds. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so, you're replacing defibrillators, getting cardiac monitors, what happens to the old ones? Are they sold? Are they destroyed? What happens?
It depends on, so they're actually two separate things. So, when we refer to the cardiac monitors, those are the ones that we use in the ambulance, they're a lot more, they're about $35,000 apiece, and those, we actually are able to trade them in and to recoup a little bit of money. The defibrillators, like the ones that's in Town Hall that we have on, also that we have in all the fire engines or in all the police cruisers, everything else, those are only about $1,500, and there's no trade-in value for them. So, the rules are, we can keep those until they no longer pass their self-test, and then we have to dispose of them. So, we'll kind of, you know, repurpose them once we know they're beyond their, what's recommended end of life, and we might be able to get another year or two out of them, but we can't trust them, so.
Got it, thank you. No other questions, and I really appreciate your, you're getting these grants and repurposing the money, that's absolutely the right thing to do, thank you.
Bill?
No questions, any use of these funds to improve the safety of our first responders, I'm very supportive of, so, I appreciate, appreciate your efforts here, Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, glad to see that, looking at the turnout gear too, that sounds like it's a great solution. All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, ready to take a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request of the Fire Department to repurpose $72,589.55 from FY '23 encumbered fire capital funds.
Second.
Rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, joint session with the Board of Assessors. We have Erin Walsh and Josh Ross here in the room with us, and I see Chrissy Roberts and Randy Winters on Zoom. Do you want to call to order?
Yep. All right, so I will call the Board of Assessors meeting to order at 6:43 PM.
I know we're late, well, we're not really late, but, thank you for your patience. All right, do you want to take us through the slide?
Sure, I'm Erin Walsh, the Director of Assessing, and I'm here to present the Fiscal Year 2024 Tax Classification Hearing for the Town of Hingham, and I'm here with Chairman Josh Ross. So, the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes. This does not change the total levy for the town, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. The classification does not determine the tax rate for the town, nor does it determine how much money can be raised, and it will not increase the revenue for the town. A split tax rate simply shifts some of the tax burden from the residential properties to all commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. So, the next slide shows how the value in town is broken out by property types. So, as you can see, Hingham's value is primarily residential. The commercial, industrial, and personal property portion make up about 10% of our overall value. The slide after this shows that, it breaks it down even further, showing that this year our residential value is 89.75%, while our commercial, industrial, and personal property make up 10.25%. So, the next slide shows our average property values in town for the past five years for single-family condominiums and commercial, industrial, and personal property. The increase from last year to this year is about 6% for single-family, 10% for condos, and 4% for commercial, industrial, and personal property. From fiscal year 2020 to now, the single-family has increased 37%, condominiums 28%, and commercial, industrial, and personal property about 18%. So, this gives, highlights the Plymouth County and surrounding towns' tax rate, so the rows highlighted in green are counties that have a split tax rate, and the blue ones have a single tax rate, so it sort of shows where Hingham falls in terms of our neighboring towns. The following slide shows the total valuation this year, which is $10,825,158,260, which is a total increase of 5.3% over last year's value. So, the next slide shows the, an impact of the tax shift based on an estimated tax rate of $10.86. So, it shows as the shift increases from 10 to 50%, the residential rate decreases a little over 1%, while the commercial rate increases about 10%. So, the highest shift would result in a commercial property paying about 50% more in taxes, while residential properties would save just under 6%. So, in the Town of Hingham for fiscal year 2024, the residential class is about 90% and the commercial, industrial, and personal property is approximately 10%. Anecdotal evidence suggests that towns whose commercial, industrial, and personal property is between 20 and 25% cautiously begin to consider a split tax rate. Once a community decides to split the tax rate, it can be difficult to go back without placing the burden back on the residential class. So, a residential factor of one will result in a single tax rate. Adopting a single tax rate is consistent with all of our past practices. On November 16th, 2023, the Board of Assessors met, they discussed and reviewed the classification issues and options, and a motion was made, and the vote was unanimous to recommend to the Select Board a residential factor of one, which is a single tax rate for fiscal year 2024. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Josh, do you want to add anything?
I don't, I just think if we go back to the, the slide that shows our, not only our benchmark towns, but our neighboring towns, that we have one of the lowest tax rates, both for our commercial and residential, not only in the area, but I think if you look, probably in the state, which would hope for commercial purposes would bring in more businesses, it would be more beneficial and attractive to businesses, so I don't know how we, you know, start measuring that or promoting that, but I think, you know, looking at some of the, I mean, just looking at some of the other towns, you can see that it's more than double in some of the other towns, so.
Right.
And, you know, we always say we want to look at it and be fair and see where we are, you know, in the three years that I've been doing this, the percentage of residential versus commercial is within a couple of percentage points each year, I don't see there's much growth on the commercial side, you know, obviously given space and where we are, but.
Right, yes, well, thank you for evaluating it each year, I think it is important to go through the process. It's, I think if I remember correctly, the split last year was 89-11, so has that, is that right? Has it shifted a little bit? More residences or no?
Tiny percent.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I think the conclusion you've reached is a fair one. I know from the commercial side, I have seen more vacancy signs than I typically see, so it's, I think it'd be very tough if you went to a split rate, so I absolutely support this decision.
Bill?
Yeah, I agree with that, I mean, I've always agreed with this since my time on the Board. I mean, one answer to your question, Josh, is zoning, right? I mean, is, one of our zoning is restrictive in terms of where business and industry can go. I mean, our commercial base is primarily Derby Street Shops, Sum 53, and the shipyard, right? And then, you know, if we were to split the rate, it would really hurt our small businesses, which make up our downtown area. So, I agree with you that it is, it is a low rate, which should attract businesses, but I think sometimes our zoning doesn't invite a lot of opportunity there, but it's, it's the right thing to do to keep the rate, I mean, I think we have an obligation to protect the small businesses in downtown, and I think any more burden we put on them, we would see a de minimis increase on our end in terms of revenue, but it would be significantly harsh on their end. So, I appreciate all this information, all the work you did, and just to note, you know, some of these towns here, Braintree, Waymouth, Milton, have such larger commercial tax bases than we do, so that's probably one of the reasons why those communities split the rate the way, the way that they do.
Yes, and you bring up a good point, Bill, I know the question has come up before, can you have a tax rate for kind of the big businesses versus our small downtown businesses? And that's not the case, that's not allowed.
Right, it's not possible.
What happens, and I think, is that a lot of the businesses downtown are renters, and they don't own the buildings.
Yes.
And so, what happens is the tax rate, the taxes can be passed along, depending on what the lease says, to the resident, the leasing, so that's how they are impacted.
Impacted, right.
Regardless of whether it's a small business that owns the building, it could be a larger corporation, but they're just passing it along to the rent.
Yes, good point.
That's a really good point.
Yes. I agree, I don't think there's any data that kind of changes my mind of how, how to do this, I think it's important to, to keep the single rate. Any other questions or comments? Chrissy or Randy, did you want to add anything? No, okay, any members of the public have questions or comments? Okay.
With that, I will make a motion to adopt a residential factor of one, a single tax rate for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
And I'd make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Tax Recap, Recapitalization Form, LA 5, and any other form as necessary for the 2024 tax rate on our behalf through Gateway.
Second.
Rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, passes unanimously. Thank you so much, and thank you to the Board of Assessors for all your work on this. All right, you're staying, right?
We're staying.
Okay, next on the agenda, FY '24 Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption Update.
So, this is our third year offering the Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption. The objective of this tax exemption is to offer specific property tax relief to older homeowners with the aim of enabling them to maintain their residence in Hingham while alleviating the financial burden associated with property taxes. So, this shows our fiscal '24 requirements, the property owner must be 65 or older, if there's a co-owner, they must be 60 or older, you must be a Hingham resident for at least 10 years, the income must meet the 2022 State Circuit Breaker limits, which is up slightly from last year, the homeowner must not have excessive assets that place them outside of the intended recipients of this exemption, and most importantly, they must have applied for and received the Massachusetts State Circuit Breaker tax credit on their 2022 tax return. The homeowner's principal residence assessed value must not be above $912,000, which is set by the state. And then, these are the required documents for this exemption, the deadline for this exemption was September 1st, to qualify, a signed application with the specified documentation listed here is required. All pertinent information is securely stored within our office. So, the next slide shows our ongoing outreach efforts, so as we began our third year offering this exemption, we continue to use all available resources at our disposal. From social media channels to local publications and direct communication, we have employed a multifaceted approach to ensure that every eligible senior in our community is aware of and has access to this valuable opportunity.
So, here are the numbers that we voted on this year, what the total exemptions were. So, our first year offering this exemption, we received 24 applications and awarded $21,201. Last year, we received, I think it was 90, I don't have it here, 90-something applications, 95, and we approved, I think, 89, for an average of $89,474,000. This year, we received 112 applications, of the total applications, 94 were granted by the Board of Assessors. The total Circuit Breaker tax credit dollars awarded by the state to approve applicants was $104,268. We have made great strides in reaching more seniors qualifying households this year, but as we look forward, it's always been our goal to increase the number year after year. We had a huge increase last year, from last, first year to last year, the increase understandably wasn't as big this year. I think goals for next year might be a little bit more direct and narrow. One of the things we talked about is focusing on other family members and neighbors to maybe help facilitate and encourage people to, to apply for it.
Right.
We were never going to get 100, 300% increase every year, we did go up this year, so it's great, and so, as you can see on the next slide, of the 111 applicants, 30 were new, which is good, 78 recipients had received it two years in a row, and 13 recipients have received the exemption all three years, which is great. Some of the reasons that we, we came across why people didn't apply again this year was they sold their home, don't live in the town anymore, entered our tax deferral program, which doesn't qualify them, they're not paying any tax deferred, so they don't qualify for this program, they didn't receive the State Circuit Breaker credit, again, which is, that's kind of the number one requirement when we look at this, is if they received their.
Does that mean they didn't apply, or it wasn't granted?
It could have been both.
Either, okay.
Most likely, more, most likely they didn't qualify.
Okay.
And another reason is they put their property in a trust, not a qualified trust, you know, some of the trusts do qualify for this program, but some people put it in a trust that doesn't qualify for the program.
Okay.
Some good news is that on October 4th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into legislation, a law which increases the maximum senior circuit breaker from $1,200 to $2,590. And so, in accordance to our bylaws, I believe, is that we are dollar for dollar for what the state offers. So, next year, applicants can receive a maximum between the state and Hingham of $5,180.
Great.
Which is a big amount.
Yeah.
So, our hope is that this number will pique some interest of people who have thought maybe that, you know, the process was a little bit too much for them to, with the money they, they received, hopefully, a number north of $5,000 in state and local tax credit will pique the interest of some of our residents. We will put out some flyers and do some marketing to show this. One of the things, and not to get into too much of the weeds of the calculations, is the way the state, and again, it's the state, whatever they get for the state circuit breaker is what the maximum we can offer, so if the maximum is $2,590, and given their income and water and sewer bill in relation to what they pay for property taxes, there's a ratio there, and so, whatever that number is, they may not receive the whole amount, so if they receive half of it, that's all that we can offer, so we can't go above and beyond the state.
Okay.
Which is why if you look at the number of approved applicants versus the number of dollars, it's not a, it's not a straight $1,200 average, it's, you know, I believe the lowest one we approved this year was $12.
Okay.
But, we appreciate them applying, hope they do it again next year and get a bigger amount.
Yeah.
We won't know the impact of this and the ratios until next year, until people start applying for it. We just don't know, and I, and State Senator O'Connor was big in championing this part of the tax, he was actually one of the four legislators, or six legislators, who was in the room making the deal on this, and so, I think next year will be a good indicator on, on how impactful this will be, whether or not, people may have to skip a year or get lower percentages, but still will receive it, but it's a, it's a huge step.
Yeah, that is.
For our residents who need, who need help.
Definitely.
So, and then, finally, I'll also add this, so, we did a little research, and we are only one of 10 states out of the 350, 10 towns in Massachusetts out of 351 that offer a Senior Means Tested Exemption, so I think that's.
I didn't realize that, that is, yeah, that's great.
And so, ours is pretty successful and.
Definitely.
Should be used as a sort of benchmark and model for other towns to use, I think. Maybe I'm a little biased.
No, you've done a tremendous amount of work, and it shows, so thank you.
So, each year, the Select Board will need to set the exemption amount of the exemption shall be within a range of 50 to 100% of the amount of the Circuit Breaker tax credit. For tax year 2022, which is what we're voting on now, it's $1,200, I believe the previous two years, the Board voted unanimously to approve the 100% of the amount shown above. So, that's where we are.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you, Board of Assessors and Erin, and everyone in your office, the outreach has blown us away and has been amazing, so thank you. Can you just remind us what, how this compares with the budgeted amount, you know, how many people we were kind of projecting to take, take advantage of this program?
So, I believe the budgeted amount, you, go ahead.
We can afford it, it's within our budget.
It's within the budget. It's within the budget, okay.
The projected awards against that amount, we can afford it.
Okay, okay, excellent.
I would say next year, though.
Yeah, it would be the calculation, but...
It might be, we might be up. I think we're in good shape right now.
Okay.
But it's good that it's, we're getting closer to where we are.
Right, the number of people we were hoping to help. So, yeah, that's great.
So, the other thing I will also add, and is the big thing next year, so, one of the requirements is the assessed value of the property.
Yes.
And so, that went from $912,000 to $1,025,000. So, did a huge jump. And so, that's one of the factors that people may not have applied for, is because their house was assessed...
At a million or...
Right. And so, the fact that, and this is a state-driven number.
Right.
And so, the fact that next year's assessed value is over $1 million, I think it'll be a huge benefit, or accelerate our, you know, advantage to our people to applying.
Sure. Yes. Do you, and I think you said that the income requirements went up this year?
Yeah, so the income requirements next year is $69,000. Single head of household is 86. Joint is 103, which is, which is pretty good as well. I think that went up, it went up 8,000, 7,000, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
I do have one question, but first, I just want to, you know, thank Josh. Thank you. I know that Glenn Mangorian, one of our residents, was very active in making sure that there was a push to communicate the program, and you've really been, the whole committee's really been instrumental. So, it shows. So, thank you. My question is about confidentiality. Could you just explain if someone submits the application to you, how confidential is it, and can people feel safe in providing the information that's needed for this?
Yes.
Just to tell our team, the ones who deal with all the applications.
Yeah, the applications aren't shared with the public at all. They're kept in our office in a secure location, and so, all that information that they give us is confidential. And that goes along with all of our statutory exemptions. Nothing is shared with the public, and everything is kept secure.
And when we talk about it in meetings, it's done in the executive session, so it's not open to the public.
And none of these documents are available through a public records request?
No.
Great. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Bill?
So, just quick, first of all, great job with the outreach. It's awesome to see this going up every year, and that's really, Josh, you, Chrissy, Randy, Erin, you guys have done a great job getting the word out. So, thank you for that. I mean, I remember the first year we had this program going, and that we were so concerned about the low level of applications, and jumped up so high, and they continue to jump up. That's great to see that. Just a couple of questions. On the slide where you have applications received and approved, for those who were not approved, was it eligibility grounds?
So, a couple of them were, a couple who applied didn't qualify for the circuit breaker right off the bat. So, it's just that, those are the ones that were, a few of them were trusts, so they, the house wasn't in the appropriate trust. I don't think any of them were for assessed, assessments, house assessments. They were all pretty much right around the number. They were fine. There were a handful for excessive assets, let's just say.
Got it. Okay. And the other question I had, since you brought it up, for those who are watching at home or might watch it later, can you talk through the tax deferral program? Tell folks who are watching, what is it? What's out there? How do they apply?
Yep, they can apply at our office. We have a plethora of information. So, there are income limits, and the deadline for that application would be April 1st. I don't have all of the information in front of me, so I don't have it on the top of my head. But there are income limits and certain restrictions. If we do have an application, they would provide us with their, a lot of the same information that they would provide here. And then, we would, there would be a lien put on their house, so it would go through the Registry of Deeds. A lien would be put on their house, and then, they would be able to, I believe the rate is, I think it went from 2% to 5% this year. It has been at 1% to 2% for the past several years. It did just pop up this year, the payback rate. So, they would be able to live in their homes until they decided to sell, or, yeah.
Great.
So, it's very easy, and we, like I said, we have all that information in our office. And if anybody is interested in that program, we think it's a great program.
Fantastic. Well, thanks again for all you're doing, and it's great to see the, great to see the applications going up, and I think we're committed to the 100% funding of this program, and we're going to continue to do that as long as we can. So, thank you.
Yes, excellent. Any other questions, comments? Any members of the public? Or, sorry, Chrissy or Randy, did you want to add anything? Okay. Any questions or comments for members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to set the fiscal year '24 Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption amount at 100% of the amount of the circuit breaker income tax credit in accordance with Section 3 of Chapter 381 of the Acts of 2020.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Let me just, so I'll undertake a motion to adjourn at 7:08. My Board of Assessor members.
You might have to unmute them.
I'm unmuted. I was muted. I am mute. So, I couldn't have, I couldn't have given any comments if I wanted to before about all of them.
Oh, sorry, Chrissy.
Josh and Erin did a great job. Second on the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Randy, aye?
All in favor, aye?
Yeah.
No, I think I lost.
All right, all right.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Okay, next on the agenda is to submit Select Board-sponsored warrant articles for 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Do you want to walk us through these, Tom?
Sure. So, this is just a process that we started last year, where we're signaling to the town when we have, when we know at this stage of the game, which is extraordinarily early, what the articles will be with some of the perennials. We know the exact language. Might as well just signal to the town that they're going to be on the warrant. So, this is really just submitting these seven or eight known articles to the warrant officially. Just getting a little bit of a head start.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay. Do you want to walk through what they are, or do you want me to read them?
However you want to do it. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
So, the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund, this is Article 1 every year, Article A at this stage of the game. And this is, this is a vote just to add the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund article to the warrant. Did you want me to get into what each of them is, or...
I don't think you need to.
Well, we're going to have a full hearing on each of these in January.
Yes.
So, there'll be a fulsome discussion on every one of these.
So, Tom, if you could just briefly explain the difference between voting to submit the warrant versus voting to approve the warrant?
Sure. This is, all this is doing is signaling that this is the language that the article will be in the warrant. When you get to approving the article, then you're answering the question. You're putting together a motion, right?
I think AdCom puts together that part, but still...
AdCom ultimately will, but...
Recommending your...
Our recommendation, right?
Yeah, your recommendation.
So, this is inserting it...
For what the answer to the question will be.
Yes, inserting it into the warrant, and then we will have a full discussion and have a recommended yes or no.
Yeah, John Coffin always tells me, "Tom, this is the question. The motion is the answer."
Yes, yes.
Right. So, this is a procedural matter. We're not discussing substance here.
That's right.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, it's more just to alert the public that this is, this is happening.
Yep.
And thank you for being early and getting this moving. Okay, do you want to just read them, and then we'll...
Sure. This, Article B is to assume the liability for DCR projects in town. Article C is the, accepting the reports of various town committees, and this list has been vetted by Sharon.
Great.
Article D is to accept the Personnel Board report. Article E is the, setting the salaries of certain officers. This is the annual one for the town clerk and some appointed or elected officials. Article F is the budget, that's Article 6. And then, Article G is the transfer from a stabilization fund. Article H will be the disbursement of the electric light department receipts, and Article L is the acceptance of easements.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And just to be clear, right now, Article F is budgets. There is no budget or numbers associated with it, but that will obviously be part of the warrant.
That's right.
Do you have any questions, Joe?
Nope.
Bill?
No, other than we're submitting others, correct?
Yeah, we'll ultimately submit this way everything, but these are the ones we do today that were easy to do.
Right. So, from now until January 20th, we will continue to review these. Okay.
Exactly, that's right.
Any questions or comments for members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to submit the following warrant articles for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Article A, Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund. Article B, assume liability for DCR on rivers, harbors, et cetera. Article C, reports of various town committees. Article D, report of the Personnel Board. Article E, salaries of certain town officers. Article F, budgets. Article G, stabilization fund. Article H, disbursement of electric light department receipts. Article M, acceptance of easements.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider a reserve fund transfer request related to town hall basement flood. Michelle, can I take us through this?
Sure.
Great.
So, this is our first reserve fund transfer request of the year. I think that's pretty good, making it to late November. A few weeks ago, or about a month ago, there was a small flood in the town hall basement when a pipe burst in the women's restroom, and our maintenance team called in some companies to help clean that up, repair the pipe, repair the water damage, et cetera. It cost just under $7,000, so it's not a big hit. But we didn't feel, that was obviously an unexpected thing that happened, and it was paid out of the town hall capital budget. We have a $25,000 line item that takes care of all the kind of repair and maintenance for the year, and didn't, didn't want to take a hit that big this early for something unexpected. We typically like to have a lot of those funds available through the winter, just in case other issues pop up. Our reserve fund for FY '24 is $734,184. That comes from our financial policy, which is setting aside, I think, 0.75% of our operating budget each year. So, healthy reserves, and we're just requesting to replenish the town hall capital account, and hopefully, we won't have too many other ones, you know, through the winter.
Excellent, thank you.
I wanted to add to that, that our crew got on it immediately, which is why it was only a $6,000 hit. There was no significant water damage. You had to take some of the lower portions of the walls out, but that got repaired pretty quickly. There was no evidence of any mold. We had ServPro in there. The fans were going from, within a couple of hours of the event. So, it was really great, yeah.
Good. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, was insurance triggered by this at all? Did we have any coverage?
Our deductible is $10,000, so it didn't rise to that level.
Okay, got it. That's my only question. Thanks.
Bill?
No questions.
Any questions or comments for members of the public? Okay.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to town hall capital, building, repair, and maintenance in the amount of $6,717.21.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda are appointments. Have appointments this evening? Okay, I will make one. I move to appoint Michael Wilmat to the Cable TV Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. And I have another one, unless you, anyone have one?
Nope.
Okay. I will move to appoint Allison Kuzkeinas to the Harbor Development Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you to Michael and Allison for volunteering. We're excited to have you on those committees. Next on the agenda is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none. Next is Town Administrator and Select Board Reports. Art?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Michelle?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Tom?
So, I just wanted to report that I did issue a one-day liquor license to Maki Gold Holiday Sippin' Shop. This was for Friday, December 1st, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM with an estimated attendance of 50 people, and a police detail is not required.
Excellent. Yes, I remember they came before us last year. That's part of Christmas in the Square, which is great. Bill?
Yeah, I have just two items. So, Saturday before Thanksgiving, the Hingham football season ended, and the following teams won league championships, to include the 8th grade, the 7th grade, the 5th grade, and the 3rd grade. Several of these teams were undefeated during the season, in addition to winning Super Bowl championships in the Bay State League. And I'm especially proud of the 5th grade team, because I'm an assistant coach on that team. So, it's obviously due to the coaching.
Congratulations, Coach.
It's great for the kids and great for the program. And the second item I have is I attended the Interfaith service last Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and it was a wonderful service. It was held at Old Chip. It's a great event every year, and Stephen Weiss gave a wonderful sermon. So, wanted just to thank all the parties that put that together.
Excellent, thank you. Joe?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, I have nothing this evening either. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at 7:90.